Ladies and gentlemen, please meet your new county commissioners Gregory A. Skrepanek and Todd A. Vanderhyde. Would eight-year-old Kristin Skrepanek please take his place at the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll deliver the invocation, Father Robert M. Timchak.
Let us pray. O God, our guide and protector, our lives are filled with your blessings. Each day, each day you show us such great love and kindness and mercy. May we always be grateful for your great gifts. O Lord, on this day, we pray for your choices blessings upon Gregory Skrepanek and Todd Vanderhyde as they are chosen to lead the people of Luzerne County as county commissioners. We ask for your blessing too upon Stephen Urban and for all elected officials for Luzerne County. May you grant them wisdom in their leadership, compassion in their service, and understanding for the needs of all of the people of this great county. May all of our elected officials work together for the common good, putting the needs of their people above their own. And may we, the people that they serve, be supportive of their efforts to improve and care for our county and our local communities. May your blessings come upon all who dwell in this county and in all of the communities that all of your people may grow in love for you and each other. Amen.
Joseph Aldello will now administer the oath of office.
Gentlemen, are you prepared to assume the office of county commissioner?
Aye.
Repeat after me. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Gregory A. Skrepanek.
Aye, Todd Vanderhyde.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Clark Lewis will now sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see the ever-dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Commissioner Todd A. Vanderhyde.
Thank you. Thank you, and most importantly, welcome to the people's house. You own this building, this grand, grand building, and we'll work every day to make sure you own it forever. A special welcome to some terrific people who are here today. The members of our federal delegation, Congressman Krajorski, thank you very much for being here, representatives of the governor's office, lieutenant governor's office, and our partners in county government, the row officers in front of me and members of the Commonwealth Court, the Court of Common Pleas right here in Luzerne County. Thank you very much for being part of this, and thank you, a special thank you, to the new Board of County Commissioners in Lackawanna County for coming tonight and proving that there's a new spirit, a new spirit of partnership, an intergovernmental partnership that is regional in nature and flies above any individual responsibility, or any individual's idea of personal credit, flies in the face of parochialism, and finally will join this community and this region as one, one place. Tonight, we gather as one community, one political geography, one set of leaders, united in a new sense of optimism and dedicated to a future for our home. What we do tonight is make official what is not merely just change for change's sake, but change for the better, the right change for 2004 and the right change for this community. One of my great heroes, Thomas Jefferson, said very often that to preserve the very foundation of our nation, we need a dramatic change from time to time. Today, we see evidence of that change and we ask you to embrace it. It's truly fitting that we gather here tonight in this grand building that symbolizes many things, but most fundamentally, it symbolizes that we can be the very best, that we can be bigger and better than even we think we are, that Luzerne County is a place that is bigger than any individual, any one's single interest, and any one's single party. Today, we join you, our row officers, other elected officials, in creating a new government, a government dedicated to serving the people, working for the people, and being part of the people. So tonight, we open this courthouse as an active symbol of a government that will be open to everyone, no matter where you live, no matter who you are, Luzerne County and this building is now your house. So, thank you. Greg and I stand here tonight humbled, humbled by your confidence and your faith in us to build a community, a unified community that is safe for our children, a community that provides real economic opportunity for all of our residents, and a community whose government works efficiently and effectively for all of its citizens. For me, this journey started really nine years ago on a day that many of us still call Black Friday, February 24th, 1995. It's a day when the then Board of Commissioners chose not to lead, chose to put their own political place and time above that and the interests of their community, and chose not to move ahead and complete a promise they made to Governor Casey and build the first union, which is now the Wachovia Arena. As a community, though, we rallied. We rallied despite that failure of leadership, created arena, yes, brought people together, brought business, labor, civic organizations, and families together, and we found the way, we found the hope, and we found the ability to do it. And today, we're better for it. Thank you, Steve, and thank you for Kevin for helping make that fight possible. We have a building on the hill. But the important part of that story is that we lost something. Not only did we lose a couple thousand seats in a paved parking lot that all of us would like to avoid that arena mud as we walked to the, walked to the front doors, but we found ourselves polarized, we found ourselves fighting with each other about progressives and non-progressives. We forgot that we are one place dedicated to the future of this community. Greg and I guarantee you that that will never happen again. It was truly on that day that I decided that this journey had to begin, that I saw that that lack of leadership polarized this community, changed us, and made us angry with ourselves. And so tonight, Greg and I pledge some simple things. We pledge that this new Board of Commissioners will never vote not to lead. This Board of Commissioners will bring us together. This Board of Commissioners will never vote to take revenge on yesterday at the expense of tomorrow, and this Board of Commissioners will always think of the best interests of the community and not of the best politically expedient thing of the time. Well over a year ago, this campaign phase of my journey began, a dining room table with my wife, Kristen, and a small group of friends, a group of friends who believed that Luzerne County could be a better place and it could be a better place immediately. We began, though, at the same time thinking we could be something bigger, bigger than any of us individually or collectively. These friends, I believe then, and all of us in this room tonight, I believe now, that fundamentally, that we knew that fundamental government reform had to happen, and it will happen. But you didn't rally to our side, you're not here tonight because we promised you new manuals and new codes. You're here because you believed in hope. You believed, like us, that big dreams are possible in Luzerne County, and that if we work together, we can make them all happen. We believe in some simple but yet amazing things, and we dare to dream them, that Luzerne County can be a world-class county, that the cities of Pittston and Wilkes-Barre and Nanacoque and Hazelton can be world-class cities, that we can build a riverfront, a world-class riverfront where there was one, where today there is simply a wall, where we can build industry, homes, and parklands on land that today is simply strip pits. And you believed, like us, that leadership is about getting things done, and you know that you can't build anything by tearing others down. Both Greg and I have been blessed, extremely blessed by the outpouring of support of tens of thousands of people, people we've never known before and without this journey would have never had the opportunity to meet. But the simple reason we're both here tonight is because we both believe at our very core that service should be as much a part of one's life as faith, family, and career. We believe that service is a value that was taught to us by our families and by the community that helped to raise us. And so we stand here before you tonight pledging to be true servant leaders, dedicated to the whole and not to any individual, dedicated to restoring dignity to public life, dedicated to returning pride to being an elected official and being a county employee once and for all. We're going to restore dignity and pride to being a public servant. Dedicated to ending the bickering that has plagued us for so long and stagnated our growth, dedicated, when necessary, to agreeing to disagree and then explaining why, and dedicated to always respecting one another's views and always providing the people of Luzerne County with a reasoning for the decisions we make. During the last years of our, or the last year of our lives, and most importantly from tonight onward, you've asked us and will continue to ask us to pledge ourselves to be accountable, to provide leadership, and have real vision. Tonight, we pledge to do just that. But tonight, we also ask something of you. We ask you to pledge yourself to hope. We ask you to pledge yourself to individual responsibility. We pledge you to pledge yourself, or we ask you to pledge yourself to dreaming bigger dreams. And most importantly, we ask you to pledge yourself to believing in the future of our home. As President Kennedy said in Dublin in 1963, and his brother said so elegantly at his brother Robert Kennedy's funeral in 1968, "Some people see things and ask why. We see things and say, why not?" Tonight... Tonight, we ask all of you, every resident of Luzerne County, every believer in hope in the future, to say why not with us. And finally, we thank you for your faith in us. We ask you to join this new government, this government not bound by the sins of the past and the anger of the past, and focus solely on one thing, the opportunities of today and tomorrow. So again, I thank you, our supportive friends, my family, most importantly, my best friend, Kristen, and now I have an honor. I get to do what no one else yet has got to do in Luzerne County. I get to introduce you to my friend of almost 20 years and my partner, Commissioner Gregory A. Skrepanek.
Thank you. Judges of the Court of Common Pleas, District Justices, members of the local, state, and federal delegations, elected officials, members of clergy, ladies and gentlemen, and my brothers and sisters of Luzerne County. My life is based on three values that have guided me in every challenge I faced. Those priorities are God, family, and community. It is with the most sincere gratitude and appreciation from the bottom of my heart and the depths of my soul that I thank God for the plethora of blessings that he has bestowed upon me. I thank my family and friends for their love and unwavering support in each and every endeavor I pursued, and I thank the people of Luzerne County for their vote of confidence to be a member of the new Board of Commissioners. It is with great enthusiasm and humility that I stand before you tonight to lead our county in a new direction. I am excited about the opportunity that lies before us, but also humbled by the difficult decisions that have to be made along the way. Nonetheless, there has never been a more gratifying time in my life. To be elected as one of your representatives and be involved in the daily decision-making process of Luzerne County is awe-inspiring. It is a responsibility that I will cherish and vow to do the best of my ability. I will do what is in the best interest of the county, and I will fight for the rights of all our citizens. Our heritage has taught us the importance of an honest and hard day's work. At one time, an entire nation looked upon our region with great respect and admiration because of those qualities as we developed a cleaner burning, more efficient heat source, cleared the way for fair labor practice, fueled the railways, and ignited the Industrial Revolution. However, somewhere amidst the Knox and Mine disaster, the Agnes Flood, a diminishing population, an increase in unemployment, terrorism, and a slumbering economy, we have lost our identity. We have lost our sense of self. We have forgotten the very fiber that has made us what we really are. We just accept things that the way they are as if it were our fate, pondering yesterday and reminiscing about what once was. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that changes. When most say it can't be done, we say it will be done. When most say it's only a dream, we'll make it a reality. And when most say no, we say yes. We will not sit idly in the seat of complacency mired in mediocrity waiting for someone to come along and wave the magic wand. We must dare to be great. We must aggressively pursue perfection. It is time to dream again and reach for the stars and rediscover who we really are. Our attitude must change. Indeed, attitude does reflect leadership, and your new administration will stop at nothing to create new opportunities for all and will not accept anything short of the best. We will pay homage and remember our past, but we will no longer be bogged down by what once was, but be focused on what will be. For when you reach for the stars and even fall a little short, you are still in the heavens, you are still out of this world. I ask that you put your faith in us. Put your faith in a new cooperative government that will dare to be great. Hope that no matter how bad things are, there is a new era on the rise and that a better tomorrow is coming. Feel proud to love Luzerne County once again as we prepare for a new year. There is no night that tonight is a historical event. It marks the end of one era and the beginning of a new one. It is a time when a new generation rightfully takes its place as the leaders of the community, time to take care of our seniors, to show our appreciation for their sacrifices and what they did for us, time to pursue greatness, and time to assure that the future is as bright as ever for our young ones. Yet, tonight is much, much more. Ladies and gentlemen, my brothers and sisters of Luzerne County, tonight, we give back to you what is rightfully yours. We give you back your courthouse and your government, a government of the people for the people. We are here to serve you, and together, we will dare to be great. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, good night, and God bless.
Please remain seated, ladies and gentlemen. There will now be a Luzerne County Board of Commissioners reorganizational meeting. And Commissioner Stephen Urban will join our new commissioners.
I'd like to thank Steve Urban, Commissioner Urban, for coming this evening. He got sworn in earlier in Hazelton, and I'd like to give him a round of applause in his second term. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the 2004 Reorganization Meeting of the Luzerne County Board of Commissioners. Call the meeting to order. I'd like to first nominate that Todd Vanderhyde becomes our temporary chairman. Second, on the question, all in favor? Nay?
I move to nominate Gregory A. Skrepanek, temporary secretary. On the question? Second. Question?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. And now, I get the pleasure of nominating Greg Skrepanek, Chairman, Luzerne County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second? On the question?
This is a historic event for Luzerne County tonight, and I know everyone in this room is here primarily supporting Todd and Greg, and we had a ceremony in Hazelton today. And one of the things that I was always told, if you want my vote, you have to ask for my vote. And I read about the chairman and the vice chairman in the newspaper. We've had discussions and we're going to work together as best as we can in this county. But this is a two-party political system in Luzerne County. I just want everyone to know that. And Greg, are you going to ask for my vote?
May I have your vote?
You do. You do, Greg, you do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your vote.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Todd Vanderhyde, Vice Chairman.
Second.
Second, on the question?
Steve.
May I have your vote? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
All in favor? Aye.
You win.
Win.
You win.
I got you, I understand.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Yes, and I move to nominate Steve Urban, Secretary of the Luzerne County Board of Commissioners. On the question?
What does a secretary do? I know under the old board, I didn't get the agenda until about five minutes before the meeting. Does that mean that the secretary is going to put together the agenda? I mean, I'm still trying to figure that out.
That means like this week, Steve, you'll be given a week's notice to help us provide an agenda and create an agenda.
In that case, I'll vote for myself then too, thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, Steve, I haven't, I haven't got a secretary yet, and if you want to act as a dual capacity, I have no problem with that.
Greg, we hope you'll hire one tomorrow.
I hope so, too. And I-
And I Move. Yo, Did We Take A Vote?
Vote. Vote In Favor Of Mr. Urban As Secretary?
I Second.
On The Question?
Aye. Vote Passes. I Move To Appoint Patricia Wilk, Acting Chief Clerk Of Luzerne County Board Of Commissioners Effective January 5th, 2004, Until Such Time As We Appoint A Full Time Permanent Clerk.
Second. On The Vote? Aye. Congratulations, Patricia. Ladies And Gentlemen, I Introduce You. Uh-oh, Uh-oh.
One Last Motion. And This Is An Important One. We Move, Or I Move, Looking For A Second, That The Regular Meetings Of The Luzerne County Board Of Commissioners Are To Be Held The First And Third Wednesdays Of Each Month At 10:00 AM In The Commissioners Meeting Room Of Luzerne County Courthouse, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, Except For The Second Regular Scheduled Meetings In The Months Of January, May, August, And November, 2004, Which Will Be Held In The City Of Hazelton At A Time And Location Which Will Be Announced And Advertised In All Three Newspapers Of General Circulation Within The County Of Luzerne County As Required By Law. Do I Have A Second? On The Question?
Aye.
Here's Closing.
Motion Passes, 3-0. And Do I Pronounce The Form? All Right, Motion To Adjourn?
So Moved.
So Moved. All In Favor? Ladies And Gentlemen, Welcome To Your New Government Of 2004 And Welcome To Your New Board Of Commissioners. Thank You Very Much.
Ladies And Gentlemen, Please Stand For "God Bless America." Ladies And Gentlemen, The Open House Will Now Begin. You Can Join Us On The Third Floor For Refreshments And To Meet The Judges Of Luzerne County And Your New Commissioners. Thank You.